Almost there. Okay, we are recording and we begin. Thank you all for your patience.
Welcome one and all to the December 19th installment of the UIDRB. Hopefully everyone is in the right spot. I shall swear on city staff.
Yes.
Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would you like to call a roll?
Uh, yes. Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Gunselman is not present. Ms. Jones is not present. Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Subla?
Yes.
Mr. Semansky?
Yes.
Thank you.
This is a public forum independent of any cases we have. Is anyone from the visiting public wish to address the board? No? Seeing none? Did everyone have an opportunity to review the minutes from last month's meeting? Any changes or comments? No? Someone would be so kind as to make a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Second.
Third.
All right, Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Subla?
Yes.
Mr. Semansky?
Yes.
Thank you.
I believe if I'm not mistaken, that gets us to our first case?
Yes.
Which was UID 22-10-004A and UID-22-10-004B, 191 West 8.
Yes.
Please tell us all about it.
All right, so 191, what, 191, and you can just sit there, yeah. 191 West 8th Avenue is an existing, you can sit, it's okay. Yeah, go ahead. Is an exist, I'm just reading this. "Is an existing duplex residential dwelling built in 1900. The applicant is seeking board approval to condense the existing duplex onto one unit and add an addition on the rear as a new second unit. The existing rear garage and porch area will be demolished to accommodate the new addition, which will be shorter in length than the existing garage and neighboring structure. Materials will include gray fiber cement lap siding with pewter trim gray fiber cement battened board, Gen Wai double hung vinyl windows, and the existing windows are vinyl, fiberglass exterior door with a 12-inch transom, and Owens Corning Dimensional Shake Roofing. The existing front porch will receive a new rubber roof, ceiling, railing, decking, and wood skirt. The existing posts and detailed beams will be maintained. The applicant is also seeking board recommendation on three variances that have been filed with the Building and Zoning Service Department, which legitimize the existing structure and lot. They include reducing the maximum side yards from 7.5 feet to 3 feet, reducing the minimum side yards from 5 feet to 1.6 feet on the east, and then 1.4 feet to the west, and then reducing the minimum lot width from 50 feet to 37.5 feet. The applicant came before the board in October 2022 with a conceptual design where the board voiced support of fiber cement siding and recommended distinguishing the addition from the original structure, adding more windows on the side elevations, considering taking inspiration from surrounding properties for new porch railings, and adding a shade tree in the front yard to offset rear parking. In response to board feedback, the applicant differentiated the new addition with board and battened siding, took inspiration from surrounding properties for the porch railings, and added a shade tree in the front yard. Submitted materials include a variance application, site plan, floor plans, elevations, and existing site photos. So here we can see their application for those variances and the listed here. And then here we can see their plans further down. So here's the site plan, so you see that shade tree in the front yard, the parking in the rear, the crosshatch, which is the addition. And then here's additional floor plans. And then here we have elevation, so you know the detail of the porch railing, which was discussed previous, at the previous meeting, and then the differentiation with this board and battened here. Here are more elevations, this is the rear, so that's that new addition there. And then these are some information on the materials. And then all of the windows will maintain the same size as the original masonry opening, so that's good there. And then after review, the proposal is generally consistent with the university district plan. The plan recommends a site for medium intensity residential uses, which calls for a maximum FAR of .6, height limit of 35 feet, a maximum of eight parking spaces, which can be double stacked, and minimum of 12% landscaped open space behind the principal structure. The plan also recommends that the scale and proportion of additions be compatible with those of contributing buildings, that distinctive architectural elements of the original contributing building influence the design and articulation of new construction, and that the contrast between old and new be reflected with contemporary design and materials. Lastly, the plan states that the primary facades of residential buildings should address the primary street, and that original architectural features be maintained, and that street trees and site landscaping be provided. And as such, staff recommends additional yard green space, but generally supports the proposed variances and design, and recommends approval. And then this one, we will have two motions, so one for the variances and one for the design. Thank you.
Thank you. Assuming you're going to want to embellish some, or there may be questions, would you raise your hand, please? Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Wonderful. Do you have anything you'd like to add to the city's comments?
I think she covered it very well. My church is here for the variances. For board approval on my project. I guess I'm open to hear what you guys have to say about it.
I think the design is great. I think aesthetically, the colors look really nice.
Thank you.
And I think that it would be something that would look great in the neighborhood. And bring nice additions to it, so. Does anybody else have anything on the design aspect of it? I think the recommendations previously were taken into consideration. I think it looks really nice.
Thank you.
There was, there was some talk about a sidewalk around, alongside the house to connect the new, the interest of the new unit to 8th Avenue. Has that materialized?
We showed it on the new site plan. It's actually an existing sidewalk. You see, I shared with the neighbor in between the building. But it does circle around to the front.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And I think, I mentioned before, my hope is to, there's more room on the other side, so my hope is to eventually share a sidewalk on the other side with the neighbor.
Let me also note that this was approved by the zoning committee of the university area commission, and will go to the full commission for confirmation on Wednesday.
Any other comments?
No, good luck. I think he addressed all the concerns in the previous meeting. Thank you.
So we need, I assume, about a separate motions for variance recommending?
Yeah.
Or support for variances, so do I have a motion to support?
Yeah, I move that we support the applicant's request for zoning variances.
Okay, second. Okay, thank you. Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Subla?
Yes.
Mr. Semansky?
Yes.
Thank you.
And for the balance?
I move that we per the submission.
Yeah, a second.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Subla?
Yes.
Mr. Semansky?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
That's a lot, man. Thank you.
Wow, so great. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, I'll be in touch.
Yeah.
Excited to see it.
Which brings us quickly to UID 22-11-05, 10 East 17th Avenue.
Yes.
I have a bunch of samples and information. Would you like to set them over here so you guys can see?
Yeah, you can just put them there and they can pass it down.
Okay.
Okay, so.
So here are.
I'll pass it down.
Or we can share.
Yeah, so these are
Oh, two.
Propositions that we're bringing.
Yeah, we're good, we're good.
Good.
Belkus, do you want one?
Oh, no, it's okay. I have like a digital version. All right.
Too carried away. We want to make sure that you're not picking.
All right, so.
There's a third option, which is color. Once we got the samples, though, they weren't nearly as nice as these. They also came broken, so they were very brittle, and they were also 33% higher, so we decided not to, not to present that, but here's information if anyone would like to see it. Here's also a more detailed pack up of the Brava tiles, which you guys are looking at. And here's the insulation, the fire climbing regions of synthetics and natural clay. Here's another sample of the Decra family sample. And here are two more colors of the Brava as well.
Oh, thanks.
And these can be mixed and matched. There were some really dark samples that were much even darker than this, but we thought that they didn't fit.
Thank you, guys. You can sit. I'm going to read my staff report, and then we can get you sworn in. So 10 East 17th Avenue is a mixed-use building built in 1930. The applicant is seeking approval to remove the original Spanish tile roof and install a tile roof using metal or synthetic tiles which mimic the look and character of Spanish tile. The applicant last came before the board in November 2022, where the board stated that the existing clay tile roof contributes to the character of the building and cannot vote to support replacing it with an asphalt shingle roof. The board did know that they would be open to reviewing and considering product specifications for alternative roof materials that are similar to the look of Spanish tile to maintain the building's aesthetic value. In response to board feedback, the applicant is proposing an alternative roof product, which is similar to the look of Spanish tile. The applicant has provided A, just A and B options ordered by preference, which include the following: Option A is the Brava Spanish Barreled Tile, and Option B is the Decra Villa Metal Tile. Submitted materials include site photos, material cut sheets, and a roof report. And if we go to their materials, this is the photo that we saw last time of the structure with the roof. And then here are cut sheets of the various tiles, which you have in front of you. And then these are past photos, but, you know, additional photos of the roof's current condition. After review, the proposal is generally consistent with the university district plan. The plan recommends that character-defining features and original architectural features such as roofs be maintained. In consultation with the historic preservation staff, it was noted that some tiles have dropped and need to be reset, but did not observe anything to demonstrate that the roof could not be repaired and maintained. Although staff continues to encourage the applicant to repair and maintain the existing tile roof, staff does know that the replacement tile has a similar look to Spanish tile. As the proposed roof material mimics the character-defining feature of this original Spanish tile roof, staff supports the proposal and recommends approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you be so kind as to raise your hand, please?
Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? I do.
Lovely. I assume you want to embellish? Tell us what you did in the last month?
Lots of projects. But this one, so, did a lot of research, talked to a bunch of different reps. There were a lot of different options out there. These were the three that fit the budget, fit the look. Bravo, I've actually done that years ago, because we were putting it on the Taco Bells. So if you know along the top of the Taco Bells, that synthetic tile, that's actually Bravo. We've done some decor in the past, but never the Spanish style. They're generally just the shingle style that they've done in the past on those. And they only sent us one sample of those, but if you look on the back of that panel, there are some other colored options for those.
You're talking about the hard one down there?
Yeah, the metal one. But in our mind, the synthetic and the Bravo mimics what's on there more consistently than than anything else that we were.
I'm curious, I've never seen this before, so is this like sprayed on somehow with like adhesive? So it's kind of like an asphalt shingle roof, so what, I mean, that stuff can't last for, what happens when this wears off, or is it?
It's an epoxy, and it's supposed to last 50-plus years.
Okay.
So, and that's what, I don't know if you've seen like Erie metal roofs, like advertised and stuff out there. Decra is like one of the other metal brands. There's a couple other brands out there. So it's stamped galvanized steel, and it's sprayed on with epoxy. So it's actually more durable than granules pressed into an asphalt shingle with a firebox base.
The galvanum substrate would be the watertight membrane, so if you lost granules, it'd be a significant.
It's not going to matter, anyway.
I mean, you know, I suppose at some point, you have to replace the roof, because it is galvanum. It's not, it's going to rust eventually, but.
So what is the warranty slash life expectancy of this? I've never seen this before.
50 years plus.
So it's nice that you brought in the samples, too, because it really does kind of give that idea. Have you seen any roofs with this product on it?
Just the Taco Bells that have been done in the past. Nothing, nothing locally that we know of too much I can definitely ask. I think there's, I'm sure there've been projects that have been done with these specific ones, and I can probably get a list if someone would like to drive past them. But from the ground, like even if I held that tile up back here next to a clay one from like even across the room, it's hard to tell if it's on a roof. You really can't tell the difference between that and the actual Spanish. And obviously, those are different. Sorry, I apologize.
No, no, it's okay. So one thing I'm curious about, because this came up, as you're aware, multiple times last month. So, you know, you get the texture from the Spanish tile, which is one part of the appeal, but the other part of the appeal, at least in my mind, is the kind of decorative ridge pieces that go on it. So does this manufacturer make matching ridge pieces that go on that are going to?
They do.
They make a hip and a cap?
Yeah, they do. So I'm not sure, but like some of those pictures, I think those are actually birds up there sitting. But there is a cone piece on the end of the roof. And yes, the cap would mimic what's currently on there.
Okay.
And then at the very top, there is that one little bald.
Yeah, would they make those things, too?
I don't know, but I can ask.
If they don't, that's something we can always do with the clay tile. So we've done.
How would you affix that? I'm just curious.
So, I mean, really, you could do that with mortar, and then these get affixed with fasteners, so. We do a lot of work, actually, we're doing work currently with EcoStar, which is another synthetic. So the synthetics that have UV protectants in them, like the Bravo, like the EcoStar, they're getting a lot of traction in colder climates, primarily because it's a good substitute. Firstly, it's a good substitute for the tiles. It's a lot more cost effective, it's easier to source, and this can be produced a lot easier and quicker.
And repairing it is pretty easy as well?
Yeah, actually, we've actually already, we almost did repair, but we added a radon pipe to a house in German Village that we did, we did the EcoStar roof in 2019. So we added, yeah, we added penetration. So if there ever is, say, a tree branch falls through, it can be repaired.
And then for cost, I just have a question about like, just for future references, like what is the cost difference between, like, something by replacing a roof such as this?
It's more than double than the shingles. But it's not 500% like actual real tile is.
Have you selected a color in one of these samples?
That's kind of why I brought all the samples. We were kind of looking for your guys' recommendation on what you thought was going to keep the character of the building. Obviously, the tiles that are on there, there were some really dark ones from staining, but most of them just were general weathered.
We're on, to give you some insight, we're still, I believe, after this roof that we've, that we're completing this week, it would be almost four years of testing colors in German Village to get a consistent blend, just because you're able to do so many different variations. The nice thing about the synthetics is that they will actually show a little bit of weathering, so like a natural tile or a slate, it is going to, I wouldn't say etch, but it is going to fade naturally. And that was one of the big concerns and questions that we had when we were going through the Zerman Village Commission, a big village commission for the slate. So this will actually, we're fading naturally as well. The question is, like Mason's saying, is what would be the best starting point, right? Like if you do a brand-new, quite hot roof, it's going to be bright. However, it's going to fade pretty quickly in our environment, just the same point of weathering.
And that, the one number to the right, the far right, for those wondering, guys, that's the bright red that would mimic what it would look like if it was brand-new. In my opinion, I think we should probably steer away from that, but any of the other ones, I think, would be good, good fits.
What do you guys think?
I think it's great for them. Good alternative.
Yeah, the other ones have too much movement and pattern.
Lot of variation.
I mean, for what you're trying to replace, this is, you see a little bit of darkening, but it's a fairly consistent color throughout. I mean, I think it's a reasonable compromise. I mean, it's, obviously, it's not clay tile, but you're right, from that side street, two-story, you're, it's a narrow street, you're two stories down, it's a pretty sharp angle, and it's a steep roof. You're not, the average person's not going to know the difference. I agree with Ryan. To me, the Tuscan clay seems like, I certainly wouldn't use the brighter orange one.
Do they know, do you know how long it takes to order, to get this in? Like, did they say anything about back order, or?
So the lead times on the Bravo are only like three or four weeks.
And then do you know how long this, like, company, because I'm just thinking that in the future, if we have to, if this is going to be a suggestion that other companies are going to use them, just curious to know, like?
It's a certification process.
Okay.
So you can't just, they won't warranty it if it's just, you just go put it on. You actually have to be a certified installer to do it. You have to get certified, so that's, I don't have a final cost, because I actually, even though I've done it before, like on the Taco Bells, I was working for a general contractor, so I wasn't actually certified. So I'm in the process of getting certified to install this. Obviously, EcoStar, many of the other products, we've gone through trainings and certifications to do those. This one, we have it because it is so unique, and it's, don't do it every day.
Yeah.
But yeah, I would, I would say you could recommend it to, for other people to use it as well. Lead times aren't bad, but it, obviously, it's not nailing down asphalt shingles. Like, it's a much, you know, different flashing technique, cutting it is unique, and then that's really high and steep, so it's going to be a lot of safety, and we're going to close the sidewalk up for it. And then removing those tiles as well.
If, Belkus, and you all might know this, but like if we, like, if we move to approve this, and then do we get like a follow-up where we can see pictures after it's been done? And so that way, we have future reference on how the project ended up turning out? Or does that seem that we kind of follow up on around? Yeah, I'm more than happy to follow along and take some site photos. You know, once I see that this is completed, I'm in the area enough, so. Yeah, I'm happy to do that. You're market.
One of the things that we did with German Village Commission through the process is that EcoStar is still in the test phase for color, because these products give a 50-year warranty. One of the big concerns with the slate was, okay, where are we going to be at in 10 years? So doing comparative analysis, in other words, you staff out, take some site photos, and then at either a five-year, 10-year increment, reach out to us, we go out, do an affective tile. But to go back to previous questions, one of the great things about the one-off stuff, you know, it's according to shingles, they're typically not going to send out a team to get you certified to do the installs, something that, like a one-off product where they really want to get people excited about the material, they actually will send out a technical resource team to assist you in the install. They're a little bit more, I would say, excited would probably be the word that I would use when someone shows interest in this product, because most roofing companies don't, they want to go for an asphalt shingle or exposed fastener. So for other installers.
I mean, obviously, this is like super helpful to have this here, and with the amount of people that come to us asking about the replacement of these roofs, it might be kind of nice to have some sort of interest.
Well, I think Belkus will have it on record, and honestly, I don't think I remember any other clay tile roof projects in the.
Just two of them.
Yeah.
Right, that's what I'm like.
Just having a great time.
So, I mean, I think like, it's a commercially available product. Like, I think if the next applicant that shows up, we can say, hey, consider using Bravo. It was installed by, you know, so-and-so. So I think they can get samples and stuff. I think, I guess my suggestion, Belkus, is that you might want to reach out, if you're so inclined, to the applicant from a couple months ago and say, hey.
I have.
No, I didn't.
Okay, all right.
As you get the final cost, just to understand, you know, because a lot of times we're throwing out numbers, always five times is more. I think you guys have been great and honest and straightforward, and it's great to see this creativity, to find a solution that works, you know, that's not right on a budget, you know, I'm saying, but fits the product, and I've appreciated that, so.
Yeah, not a problem. Josh has worked for the past five years on alternative products with the other commissions in town, and has actually got quite a few of new products that are synthetics or better than others, got them approved. So we're always looking for the next best thing, and we'd like to work with you guys in compromise, and we get excited about doing fun, interesting projects that aren't vinyl siding and asphalt shingles, so.
And to be fair, we do prefer natural slate, we do prefer natural clay tile, but we also understand our clients, sometimes it's just very cost-inhibitive. If we can bridge the gap with a product that could potentially last 50 years or longer, so we don't have to come back and continually replace it, it's a nice happy ending.
And I think, I mean, there's also a difference between clay tile and slate. Like, I mean, clay tile was fundamentally not real great in a, in a, this really goes through a free thaw. Slate, I think, does a little better, but obviously, there's still a pretty significant cost difference, so. Yeah, I think it's a great compromise. Appreciate you all doing this.
So I move to make a motion, is that what you're saying? Do you, do you move to approve? Is that what you're saying?
Move to approve.
Okay.
I'll say it.
Thank you. Mr. Fleming?
Actually, let me add a condition to it. If possible, recover those weird humpy ridge bends and reuse them.
Absolutely.
Just to give character, but other than that, yeah, yes.
So then that would be a new motion?
All right, let me, all right, let's do it.
Yeah.
I move to per the applicant's submission with the following conditions. The color, the product that you used is the Bravo synthetic tile in Tuscan clay. And the applicant will try to recover the existing ridge ornament, and if feasible, reinstall it on the roof to maintain some of the character of the building.
That is a clear condition. Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Subla?
Yes.
And Mr. Semansky?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That passes. And I'll be in touch with you about what needs to be noted to meet those conditions when you submit, you know, your final plan, so I'll be in touch.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The more info, the better. He's carrying all that.
No problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you guys again soon.
Yes, thank you.
Which takes us to UID 22-12-002, 43 East 14th Avenue.
Yes, so 43 East 14th Avenue is a contributing residential structure, significantly modified with an addition in 1960. The applicant is seeking board approval to construct a new egress staircase. Plans also include two new half-light door openings in the existing masonry wall on the second and third floors to accommodate exterior egress doors onto the staircase. The staircase will be steel painted or powder-coated black and provide egress for the second and third stories of the building on the west elevation of the building. The stairs will satisfy building code requirements to change the use from apartments to a sorority. Submitted materials include existing site photos, site plan, floor plan, stair section, stair plan, stair details, and exterior door cut sheet. And if you look at that, this is the exterior of the structure. Oops. This is the side of the structure that will have the staircase on this masonry wall. And then here's another shot of that. And then here are the plans, so we have the site plan. These are the floor plans, but you can see the staircase here on the side. And then here are details of the staircase. You can see the elevation there, and then some section details, and material details there. And then this is just, you know, for the door, the exterior door. After review, the proposal is generally consistent with the recommendations of the university district plan. The plan recommends that the scale of additions be compatible with those of contributing buildings and that original architectural features such as windows be maintained. As the proposed staircase is in scale with the structure and does not impact existing architectural features, staff supports the proposal and recommends approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you be so kind as to raise your hand, please? Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Do you have anything you'd like to add to the city's review?
Especially, it's pretty straightforward, Belkus, of course.
And you're with home team?
They're, they're my client.
Okay, you're the architect?
I'm the architect.
Okay.
I don't have any questions.
No questions?
Tell me, I gotta admit, I'm usually on board with Belkus. I'm not sure I'm convinced on this one.
Um, it's on that conversation. It's going from apartments to a sorority house and it's, I think they're both actually falling into the R2. It's just different use of the...
Is this the change in use triggered the...
Yes.
So the, the problem is currently the, the building has one interior egress stair and then it's got another interior stair, but that one's not, um, enclosed and rated. Is that the issue?
Well, the issue is, so you have the front building, which, when it was built, was a single family home.
Right.
Been turned into four apartments somewhere along the way. At the back of the building was built a, in the sixties, was built a, like a 16-unit apartment building, a block, just a block thrown out there, like with 16 studio apartments, which has its own egress, it actually has two means of egress, it has two of them, which are compliant.
Okay.
So when we go take that front building now to the sorority, which increases the occupant load, thus the requirement for the direct exterior egress from each floor. And the way the buildings are constructed, line up, lined up with each other at the second and third floor to, we can't take advantage of the existing stair at the back building. Because we were looking, we were trying to avoid adding the exterior stair, um, and logistically, we just had a hard time trying to...
Yeah, I mean, I don't love it. It's sort of, uh, you know, it's just a steel stair. It's the kind of thing we're actually, I think, trying to avoid getting in the district.
I do. Um, and I think, you know, if there's any recommendations, I don't know, I don't see it up, but, um...
Yeah, different material.
We're open, well, we have to stay non-combustible, so does the steel because of the proximity to the property line. That was the only request by zoning.
So it's effectively...
So we just want to keep it a straightforward thing, hopefully it's made it less...
The two buildings are fire separated?
Yes.
Okay, so the, the two buildings, fire separated, so the back building has two means of egress, one internal, one external. And the, the front building, if you're going to bring it up to code, the, the single interior is not going to work because it's R2, it's not residential code and so you've got an issue and you're also hemmed on, on the site and you're up against the property line, so...
Right.
Zoning lots of non-combustibles, so wood is out of the equation.
Right. Because we started out proposing wood and, and, you know, that was immediately shot down. So the thought was just at least maybe keep this straightforward and non, I don't, so I think they not draw attention to itself, I suppose.
So yeah, I got one more for you?
Pardon me?
I got one more for you.
Okay.
Building code requires exterior egress stairs to be undercover.
You know, when I actually said or started talking, I was thinking about that and actually that did not, did not come up.
Yeah, I mean...
Well, and I, well, if it's, like, there has to be like another roof over there.
Yeah, the, uh...
If it's purely for egress and not general...
I can find the code section for you.
Yeah, no, I'm going to double, no, you're right. I do remember, it, um, it didn't come up and I totally did not think about that, to tell you the truth.
It's, um, because it's sort of, it's, the way she's got, it's in, sort of going through the building code, it's the commercial code. And so the commercial code need two means of egress and if one exterior means, one means is exterior, then you need to, um, you can do exterior egress, the stair outside like this, but you've got to put cover on it so that...
Ice and snow.
Rains, snow, ice, so it's...
Now, I, now that you say that, I do recall that part of the code actually.
So I'm curious, uh, the one photograph, it looks like that's a functioning driveway right now. That's going to go away because this is obviously going to occupy...
Yes.
Or at least pass this point.
At least past that point.
Yeah.
Up to that big front patio area.
And how, how do you get to the stair? Like, if I'm reading this correct, there's the ramp and then there's the stair and that stair is coming from the back.
Is the ramp there, though?
Yeah, the ramp, there's a ramp along the house.
A ramp along the house, that you can go under the stair.
Where's the ramp there?
They know it's being added, that's part of...
Oh, whoa, 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 whoa.
That's being added, yeah.
Part of the news.
Got you, got you, got you.
You can see it on the...
And it, it just...
Okay, so it's going around the backside of the first set of stairs then? Got you.
It just, to me, it seems this is a little awkward in how you get to this, that there's no way from the street to get to the stair.
Right there, yeah.
Well, you have to walk past it, kind of.
Well, I mean, yeah, but you're technically on someone else's property on that way because it's right up against...
So that's a shared driveway?
No, 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 it's completely on...
Oh, but you're taking up the whole thing if that...
Yeah, I understand.
It's right up against the property line.
And I, and I suppose it's that stairs only has been looked at, it's not meant to be used for, it's meant purely for emergency egress. Um, the sorority just, I mean, that's just part of that, they're controlling access to, from the building down. And I know, I...
It just, God, you're, you're now blocking the egress outlet. If something else was put there, if they put a wall there, a fence there along the property line, you literally are blocking yourself in.
Well, could you, could you come out the other egress, though, and make a U E and go to the back of the, back of the property? Is there, like, is there...
Yeah, because I mean...
All right, I see what you're saying, okay.
Because the, the code would require you to get from the stair to the, the end of the property in a public right-of-way. Like, it's insufficient to, to drop someone at grade, you got to take them out.
Well, they should be, they can go to the front of the property.
Well, but, but cross that onto someone else's property?
If that property line put a fence there.
Yeah. You'd have to do it within your property.
But we, I'm not seeing what, we should just be right on our property, we're not on the neighbor's.
But the stair lead you to...
So the stair goes in the grass almost? Is that what it looks like?
No, no.
Stairs in the driveway, but it's, it's, I don't know which direction, it's looking south. There, there's no, there's no way from the street, from 14th, to get to that stair.
Oh, I see. Well, it should be just, they'll have, that actual part of that grass is our property.
That's not what that's...
No, I see what you're saying, no, I do see what you're saying.
I mean, are you required to have like three feet of minutes or in the minimum width that you've got to provide?
At the landing, just...
Same, same as your egress.
Yeah. So the question is, I suppose, do you have three feet from the edge of your stair?
To the property line.
To the property line, to where people could come out that other door.
And I believe we had, it's just hard to see on that. I mean...
How wide are your stairs?
They are, they're 36 inches wide, so...
Yeah.
And we should have 10 feet.
Is the ramp required for ADA access based on the new code? Is that what you're at, like...
That, that was actually more, we weren't totally had to have the ramp, that was more the, um, the sorority requested that. When we started, we weren't expecting to, we thought we'd have egress differently, but the stair came after the ramp.
Because it almost feels like, at least to me, that, that ramp is driving a lot of design and pushing this out from the building. Like, if the stair was closer to the building, you'd get rid of this issue, you'd get rid of a lot of, and it wouldn't feel like this gigantic structure that's pushed off to...
Well, yeah, I mean, it makes me wonder if you could push it back further. If you have to have the ramp, have the ramp occur before you get to the staircase to where, and then the question is, can you have a run of stairs go up high enough to where someone leaving that door can walk under?
Well, and there should be...
The landing, if you will, to get, and not have to be on the neighbor's property.
I know there's enough to walk, want to walk under, but now, now I am questioning that. Actually, I feel like I need to go back and look at the width of every thing. So I know we can go under, but walking around it for the stair...
I, I just feel like there, yeah, it could be a little bit tight. I mean, I know you, you still have to have the switch back, but I mean, I, you know, I don't know if there's a way to do it.
I mean, what's, what's your floor to floor?
The first floor, I believe, is about 10, 10 feet floor to floor. And, and then the upper floors are more untypical, like nine feet, like eight foot ceiling.
I mean, you can go 12 feet vertically without a landing, so...
Yeah, I just wonder if you could look at it that way, trying to do it another way without the...
Well, so, so for the first run, I just don't know if you, it's going to go off the drawing to the right, but if you could, I mean, I still don't like the fact that you're going up the stairs, you've got to pass it before you start going up, which is a little bit weird.
Yeah, I agree.
Um, or you could just reorient it to where there's a set of stairs that face the street and then you go up high enough to where someone could go under it. And then, and then the question is, your ramp going to start past that point? Does this all make any sense to where?
And I question whether that ramp belongs there in general. Like, I mean, you have that wall up front with the stairs. It feels like if you were going to do a ramp, something like that in, in front would be better than along this, I mean, because if you're, if you're really looking at that ramp from an ADA perspective, how it's drawn, no one in a wheelchair could get past those stairs, you'd have to go in the grass, past there, up that ramp. It just doesn't function logically.
No, you're right, no, you're right. And I, and I did, I don't know, why we, we thought we had, sorry for the confusion. Um, but believe me, he thought we had enough room going around the stairs to get to the ramp. I'm now sitting here, beginning with you, um, you have me questioning it, but that, as we submitted, we, we had the three foot going around the bottom stair there.
So I think that there, there's a couple of things that need to be looked at. So there's, there's that issue and then, and then Keone also raised the issue of needing a covering on it. So I think there's a couple of things that...
Yeah.
Taking a second look would probably be a good thing.
Okay. Um, this is up here. When I, when we add a covering, is there preferences to...
Could you go back to the, to the, to the, I think if there's some way to add on to that, that is, is in keeping with the character of the house, I think it would probably be the...
Just a...
Well, I don't know. Maybe it's going to be a flab route.
Or just a little triangular type roof that kind of catches, kind of that, or if we could bring...
I think part of it depends on how addresses that...
Starts, starts, stops.
Right, I mean, that dorm up there makes it...
Where the landing starts and stops and...
You might have to play with it a little bit.
Yeah, because I would like to take advantage of the structure that's, with the landings to...
Yep.
I can't find it at the moment. I seem to recall there, just double checking.
And I, I'm going to double check that too, because I, now that you had mentioned that, I do recall something in there, but it obviously got by, if it, if it is there and then I'd hate to kind of get down the road and...
No, I get that and stuff gets by me all the time, so.
Yeah, so now I'll double check that. Because that, that does sound vaguely familiar.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I, I think where I'm at is kind of what Ryan's saying. I think the, I think if you review the code, you may need a roof, so that'll change the design a little. I, I get the, the non-combustible design, I get that you're hemmed in and nowhere else to put it. I think, as Ryan and Carrie said, I, I think maybe the, there's a way of kind of cleaning it up so it's less awkward and it doesn't budge up on the back corner. So I, I would like to see if you can maybe adjust a little bit of that.
So should we officially table? Because this is in for a vote?
Staff would recommend that this be continued.
Okay, continue.
Yes.
I move to continue the application.
I second that.
All right, Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Subla?
Yes.
Mr. Semansky?
Yes.
All right, thank you. So it's been continued, I'll follow up if you can.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Moving to UID 22-12-005, 136 to 138 Chittenden Avenue?
Yes. Um, all right, so 136 to 138 Chittenden Avenue is a contributing residential duplex built in 1903. The applicant is seeking approval for the replacement of 20 existing vinyl windows on the right side of the south elevation, east elevation, and left side of the north elevation. The proposed replacement windows are vinyl Belmont white double hung windows, which were sized to fit within one-fourth inch of the original masonry opening. The front, uh, first floor window will be clean, sealed, and painted, and the applicant is also seeking approval for two exterior fiberglass replacement doors, like for like. The submittal includes photos, uh, site photos, a window quote, floor plans, and material cut sheets. And, and we can, uh, this is the front of the home, um, and the windows to be replaced are numbered there. This is the side, um, again, more of the numbered, uh, images of the windows. And again, this is the rear of the home. And then here we have the window quote, and it goes on and on, but it just shows the comparison between the dimensions of the proposed windows with the masonry opening and that they're almost the same dimension. Um, and after review, the proposal is generally consistent with the recommendations of the University District Plan. The plan recommends that when the replacement of windows and doors is necessary, that the original design type and proportion be maintained and that replacement windows and doors fit the entire opening with no filler or additional framing. Staff encourages applicants to utilize a window from the UIDRB-approved windowless for contributing buildings, but recognizes that for this case, the existing windows are vinyl and like-for-like replacement can be supported. Given that the replacement windows will be sized to fit the masonry opening within a one-inch max in size difference per HPO recommendations, staff does recommend approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you raise your hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Do you have anything you'd like to add to the city's comments?
Uh, to this portion, no, but I have a pretty good feeling I'll be back in a month or so for, for many of the items, so. This is the easy part.
Let's start with the easy part. So you're going to remove all this crap that currently fills the window up? There's, it looks like there's, I don't even know what that is, painted wood?
On the front.
Yeah, so that's all going to come out and then on the sides, like there's a, there's an inside something and there's at least two more?
Yes, that's, that, those are all filled with vinyl, that's, and it's going to cap, yeah.
So you're going to take it out, down to the masonry opening, and then you're going to put in a vinyl window sized to the, the masonry opening with a half-inch joint on the four sides?
Correct.
Perfect, I'm good with it.
And then these different door options that you have, is the solid door for...
The side.
The side, okay, and then the, the windows in it, yeah.
Yep.
I don't have any other questions. I'm moved to make a motion?
Do you move to approve? Is that what I'm hearing?
I'm moved to approve.
Okay.
Seconded.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Subla?
Yes.
Mr. Semansky?
Yes.
All right, thank you, that passes. I'll be in touch.
Good luck.
Thank you for getting me in last minute, too.
You're welcome, thank you.
Um, I do have a question, though. So for the next time I'm here.
I move to make a motion?
Do you move to approve? Is that what I'm hearing?
I move to approve.
Seconded.
All right, thank you. All right, Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Sutcliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Semansky?
Yes.
All right, thank you, that passes. I'll be in touch.
Good luck.
Thank you for getting in last minute, too.
You're welcome, thank you.
I do have a question, though, so for the next time I'm here. The owners want to keep the basement as a bedroom. So right now, we got to move around the chemicals to make that basement a functional bedroom with proper egress. Proper egress is either gonna be a window well, with, you know, with the standard forty-four inches, you know, twenty-two by twenty-four, with a well. Is it going to be easier, what's gonna, I guess aesthetically, what's gonna look the best? A well or an actual staircase, because there's not much room in between these homes. So I'm just trying to get...
It's gonna be on the same side that the photographs were taken of, with a piece of cardboard against the...
The owners also said, well, while we're doing this, we'd like to make the other side proper as well. So I think both sides would be...
So would that be like number twelve or thirteen if we're looking at the size?
Um...
You had submitted a photo with their numbers, and I was just trying to...
Yeah, from the side photo there, a couple of those were covered up by plywood, so... You've got those five windows on the side, so those first two would be in that bedroom, at the bottom on the...
Because we're talking about basement, right?
Basement, correct.
So does the property line run between, be perpendicular between, or do you have any idea?
That would be my guess.
Okay.
Does the wells come out where the sidewalk?
Yes.
I think that's gonna be part of the driving, so that's how you get around the...
And then the only other option, and it's not really, we could open it up a different way, but to utilize the back half of the basement as a bedroom. The layout's just a lot different, a lot more chopped up. But we also had one nap to move the mechanical room from the front to the back. So there's options, so if we were to come out back, there's some area that we could do it. There's AC units back there. I don't know if you can get to my photos to the back of the building.
Like on the other side of where that back addition is, to the right?
So if, yeah, so right there, we're at eleven on the bottom this. There's actually windows back there as well, but there's also AC units where that plywood is.
So that could be an exit, is that what you're saying?
If we switch around where the bedroom currently is. But right now, we're down to studs, essentially, with fire that affected just that side.
I mean, I guess from my standpoint, the... If the owner wanted to turn the basement into code-compliant bedrooms, my suggestion would be make, size the window per code for emergency egress, and just put in a well or something. I think the problem with the stairs, now you've got this weird dark hole that at night someone can hide in.
Yeah.
And I don't think you wanna do that.
I've been there at night. We didn't have power there one night. I was there till one in the morning, over the fun.
Yeah, I think, I think I would accept a well. I mean, yeah, I think you gotta use it.
You think it's a well with a ladder out here, basically?
Nah, it's usually just, I don't really do residential, so I don't know the code that well, but the window has to be certain size, and from inside the bedroom, you know, you can crawl out, and there's enough, you know, it's like the half-circle wells you see in some houses.
Sometimes it's different in that they do have that.
The ladder, yeah. And I guess I would just, my whole point was, if there's enough room to have that and not interrupt the sidewalk around, that's, I think, gonna be your challenge of getting that well in place, because if you, and goes back to what you just saw in the last case, if you have to use the neighboring property to get around, I think that's problematic in my...
So, and I can also check to see if what would be compliant, either a grate that is level with the sidewalk, you know, if we do anything like that, we're gonna have to do drainage, tuck it into existing and all of that. So it would be a grate, you know, that would be flush with the sidewalk, so it wouldn't take out that.
Yeah.
Okay, a meeting with them, he's not back until after the first of the year, so I'll get some answers on which direction and where to go, and probably see you guys again.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
You too.
So we're, we've got two more?
One of the applicants decided not to come this month, so that'll be another time. And then the last applicant for 141 to 143 East Norwich is not here. I will note, the approximate time for theirs was 5:50, and it's about five, but I do know...
Five fifty?
Yes, yeah, with the, with the suggested time, but I do know in my emails to arrive at least an hour before their approximate time.
But I think it's because the previous applicant dropped out, right?
Right, right.
Like, if the previous applicant was there, that would've taken...
Yeah, right.
Do they have to, do they have to be here in order for us to vote on it, or it's just...
Well, theirs was just conceptual, so they were just looking for feedback from the board, so we could...
They're just having all our wisdom, it's a shame.
You type it up, right?
I do type up meeting minutes, so one option is, is I could pull up their materials, and you could just give some feedback, and we could have some dialogue about it. So I could give them, you know, something written, or we could just sort of, you know, skip it for this month, since they're not here, and move on to staff approvals. It's up to you all, what you would...
Can we go to staff approvals and then come back?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Give them a few minutes.
Yeah. So the staff approvals are listed here, pretty typical items. One item was a playground for the Graham Elementary School on East Sixteenth Avenue, but that falls within the Historic Resources Commission as it's a, it's a property that's listed in one of the historic districts, so, but they did, it was a retroactive project where they took some trees down and put in a playground, and then they had to come back to get that approval, which they, I guess, weren't aware of. So, so this is the playground, we can see it here, here, there it is. But they did go back before the Historic Resources Commission to get the proper approvals. The playground had been approved, but the tree removals had not been approved, and they went ahead and removed the trees during the playground process.
I'm just curious, what's the district that they're in?
Um, I don't have it memorized, to be honest. Maybe like Ayuka Ravine, given the location, but it also could be Indianola Forest. I'm not sure, though. But this is the, so you can see that this tree here left. Or, or no, there's different trees. Anyway, but that's the one, I guess, that's of most significance to call out. The rest are, were straightforward.
Just, I mean, I'm fine with it. It is a point of protocol, I guess. If it's in HRC, doesn't it go to HRC unless both, or am I...
Technically, yes. It, it, they both need, they need a COA from both the HRC and the UIDRB, but as long as HRC reviews and approves it, then it can be a staff approval on the UIDRB side, because the historic districts are more stringent with their guidelines, so... So, yeah. Any other questions, or do we...
So we don't have to, like, say anything after you?
We have to approve.
You just have to approve it into the formal record.
Go for it.
I can't make motions.
I move to approve. I'm gonna get it, I wanted to...
She's got the same...
So you move to put the staff approvals into the formal record?
I do, yes.
Yeah, that's, that's what I said, yeah.
Wonderful.
The short version of it.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. All right, so it's been moved and seconded. Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Sutcliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Semansky?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
I'm disappointed, I've been on this forty years, and it never occurred to me that just I moved a roof. It's, it's good, I like it.
You're like, let's do this, right?
Well, I guess if, maybe just for one more moment, an idea that has been floating around is the idea of updating the staff, and I guess this is maybe an item of new business, but every year, we revisit the staff approval list, right? And for me, that nudge comes in January, and I was taking a look, and something that I'd like you all to think about is the idea of potentially having vinyl-to-vinyl windows on contributing structures be added to the staff approval list, so long as that the windows are within, you know, that, I guess, deviation of the original masonry opening, as long as that's verified with the window quote, the dimensions, and all of that. This isn't the time to review it or vote on it, but I just wanted to sort of float that idea out to you.
It seems pretty easily, easy. It seems pretty reasonable to me. I think the, the whole windows list was well-intentioned, but maybe a little stringent for the district.
Yeah, that's what we're finding in practice.
Yeah, because it came off the HRC list.
Yes.
The HRC list is reasonably stringent, so, yeah, I mean, I think like-for-like is completely reasonable, and I think, you know, you've already, your staff report already requests that the, you know, they get rid of all the filler shit, and the window matches the opening, which frankly is, I think, the more important thing.
Absolutely, okay. All right, well, that'll be an item that we'll revisit in 2023.
Okay.
And now, what, what would, how do we feel? Do we wanna talk through it, or do we want to wait for next month, and then I can follow up with them and, you know, just say they weren't here? There's one key piece that I'm just curious about, you know, with this struc, like, off the cuff, this... They're proposing an addition, which seems harmless, but, but in doing that, they're proposing parking in the front setback with two new curb cuts, and that's just something that I'm, you know, curious, and it can vary.
Oh, wow.
Site by site, right?
I was looking at this, and I thought this was on the back side.
No, it's, it's in the front, so each site is unique, and sometimes, you know, there are exceptions to the rule, but I was just curious on what you all, your all thoughts were on this.
Are there circumstances here that would, that would cause that to be an exception?
The tricky thing is, this site is, how do I say, like, I guess, landlocked from the other sides. There's different property ownership behind. In planning, we typically recommend that parking be in the rear, locate, you know, off of an alley. There is an alley, but then there's a paved parking area owned by a different person, so she can't get her parking in the rear, and then the side... And then Plan B would be to locate parking on the side, but you can't do that, because, I'll just go to the site plan. There isn't enough space to fit a driveway, so this is the structure, and she's proposing to locate the parking in the front here. Let me go to the, the site plan, it's seen better days. Okay, oops.
What's the...
Is there any...
So this is...
Is there any, like, properties in the area that have anything similar?
Not that I've seen. So, so...
Parking require, is the parking, for this case, a requirement of the...
I, I think so. It would require a variance, but staff would support a variance to not have parking in the front setback. It's not generally best practice. We do sympathize that, you know, she's just landlocked, there's no other way to do parking, and there's not enough room on the side of the structure to sneak a space here or two.
I mean, I can see possibly those two spots...
Right here.
Double stacked.
Yeah, that, that may be somewhere to wiggle, but...
You know, it, it, I guess, same as there's another curb, that would be, but not how it is now with...
Can you hold the street view real quick?
Yeah.
I guess my take on it is, having lived in Northwood Park for five or six years, like, it was street parking, like...
Yeah.
You know, plenty of houses in the area that are in street parking.
Let me find a different year when...
They could clean it up.
Yeah, let me find a different year where the tree isn't. This is, this is decent. So there'd be two spaces...
Definition of the word, yes.
Well, with the tree, it's grown quite rapidly, but, so there'd be parking, you know, where this shrubbery is, and then parking in this area.
Do you mind going to the left just a little bit with that street view?
Uh, yeah.
I just wanted to see what...
Like scoot to the...
Yeah.
Yeah, there's...
Okay.
And I did look, you know, in, in the surrounding blocks, and I didn't see an example, any precedent, I guess, with this type of parking.
I think it'd be hard to make it work with the grade.
I was gonna say, I don't know how they, yeah, yours is a big retaining wall.
I think there'd be a large curb cut, and then you'd ramp up in...
Well, yeah, I mean, that's horrible.
And then the other topic, and I'm not an architect, right? I, it just, I'm not an architect, so I don't quite have the terminology to, to say this, but, so this, their addition... Okay, the upper part is what's there, right? And then this is what they're proposing. There's a entrance door that they're proposing to just be open, so no physical door. It's sort of just an opening to walk through with a little light above it. And then when you walk through said opening, you'd come onto this open staircase to get to the units, but this, this is just open. There's like a sketch-up rendering of it, and, and, and again, I'm not an architect, but it just seems a little cattywampus to me.
That's a good word, I would...
Is that side really open?
It's just open, and, and, so I'm not...
Was it for structure purposes?
I, I don't, I don't know, but, but that's another... That, that's just another element that I'm, that I'd be curious, you know, and I'm...
I mean, if that was like, froze off and made it felt, you know, like, you know, I don't have a problem with it not being a conditioned stair, but it can't be open on that side.
So you'd recommend that there'd be an exterior wall there?
It looked like a finished wall.
A wall?
You see that on a lot of, like, three-story walk-up buildings, where it looks like it's part of the building, you don't see the stair, you're, but it's an external egress there, I mean...
Okay.
Something that could be nice is that upstairs then would be able to have access to like a little patio kind of thing, it looks like? Which would be nice if they're a planted person, would be able to kind of utilize that as like a little patio.
Okay.
But I don't, I still don't understand that, like, little tiny doorway out front. I don't get that.
Right, yeah.
So, Pete, the, the front will, will have windows as...
Yeah, so, so the current, yeah, so this is what they're proposing. The current condition of the structure, I, I don't know what happened.
Yeah.
The, the, um, this was built in 1900, so clearly, there's been significant modifications to the structure over time.
I appreciate the, the tact with which you're using your words.
Yeah, so, so we do appreciate that they're adding windows back on, you know, to the front and also the sides, but staff does recommend that instead of just this opening, that there be a physical door, and then maybe some sort of like porch structure, or a porch-like structure, to make it a little bit more inviting and consistent with some of the front elevations you see in the area.
Especially because they don't have any grassy area outside.
Yeah, but then you can also see too, it's sort, you just sort of ramp up onto the property to park. So I'm just, how are we feeling about this proposal? And is there anything I could...
Not good.
Take back to the applicant for some constructive feedback?
I, I think it would be nice if they could add a couple more windows on the front, instead of the two windows that they've added. I would think that I would like to see a little bit more windows.
I guess I would suggest just enlarging it.
Yes, the size.
Yeah, I don't mind the quantity and one on the floor, but I agree, they could be bigger.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, and then...
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, are you the applicant for East Norwich?
Yes.
Oh, wonderful. I'm so happy you're here. We, we ran quite a bit ahead of schedule, and so we were actually just sort of dialoguing about your application just in case, you know, so I could bring some feedback to you.
Great.
But if you get settled, you know, just, I'm gonna read my staff report, and then we can, or the board can give your feedback. So just go ahead and get settled. Okay, so, again, this is for 141 to 143 East Norwich Avenue, and this is a two-story residential dwelling built in 1900. The applicant is seeking conceptual feedback to construct a rear three-story addition, new roof over exterior stairs leading to the second floor unit, and a four-space parking area with two new curb cuts between the principal structure and the right-of-way. The applicant notes that parking is not accessible from the rear. The applicant is also proposing a twenty-by-thirty-foot metal property sign, or feet, I'm sorry, inches, twenty-by-thirty-inch metal property sign to be affixed to the front of the structure. The applicant anticipates that variances will be needed, and is in communication with the Building and Zoning Services Department. So again, just, you know, looking at their materials here, this is the, no, we have some photos of the home, so this is the front elevation... no, we have some photos of the home, so this is the front elevation part of the side. Oh, my goodness, they're different sizes. So this is the front elevation as it is today. Um, this is the side. So the stairs are proposed to be sort of tucked into this space here. Um, this is the rear elevation of the home, so you can see that it's fenced. So there isn't really a way to, um, parking-wise, access the rear. Um, and then here you have, um, the site plan as it exists now on the left and then what is proposed on the right. Um, so you can see the parking in the front and then the crosshatch showing the addition. And then here we have the floor plans, roof plan, and then here the elevation. So on the top is what's currently there now and then the bottom is what's proposed. So that's the north and east elevations. And then same thing with the west and the south. So up top is what's there now. And then on the bottom is what is being proposed. And then we have, uh, some sections of the floors. And then here is like a sketchup rendering. So the front elevation there, side. And then looking from the back with the other side. And I'll just, I'll leave it there. And then after staff review, um, the proposal is generally consistent with the university district plan. The plan recommends this site for medium-intensity residential uses, which places priority on preserving existing contributing buildings, uh, recommends an FAR of .6, max height of 35 feet, max of eight parking spaces and 12% of landscaped rear open space. The plan also states that the scale and proportion of additions be compatible to those of contributing buildings and that the contrast between old and new should be reflected with contemporary design and materials. Furthermore, the plan recommends front entrances include a porch or porch-like element, that the shape of single and two-family residential buildings should be varied through the roofs, the use of roofs, dormers, porches and other projections, that parking and that landscaping be provided in the front, oh, and that parking and that landscaping, oh, that's a typo, sorry, but that parking not be provided in the front setback and that landscaping is provided in the front setback. And then lastly, the plan states that parking be located to the rear of structures and where access to the rear of the property is not possible, up to 50% of the parking may be located at the side of the principal building and that parking adjacent to the public rights-of-way be screened as required by code. So as such, staff generally supports the proposal aside from the proposed parking in the front setback and has the following recommendations. One is to remove all parking in the front setback and maintain the area as front yard green space. Staff would support a full parking variance to accommodate this site design update, include landscaping in the front setback such as plantings or a shade tree, reconfigure the open front staircase area, provide a porch or porch-like element with a closed door on the front entrance and locate the light to the side of the door to accommodate and adjust the exterior building materials to create visual interest and texture. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm sure we're gonna have commentary going back and forth, so I need to swear you in. Would you raise your hand, please? Do you swear probably tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Here, do you think you'd like to add to the city's, um, review, the, what you, what you've submitted today?
Uh, no, so, uh, my name is Brenda and I'm the architect for the project. The owner, um, is traveling for the holidays, so she couldn't be here. What's important to her is getting some parking on this site and adding the bedrooms on the third floor. Those are kind of the two priorities that the owner is, is hoping for. Um, everything else, I, well, not that that's not open for discussion. Um, so yes, we have a lot to discuss. It's, um, it's an interesting structure in its current condition. And so, um, you know, trying to improve it to a certain extent within, you know, some, without putting too much cost into it, so.
What is the parking situation? What is, was that a suggestion from like somebody who is like, that they're thinking about renting it to or, you know, the emphasis of, of having a preferred spot rather than off-street parking?
Yeah, they own other rentals in the campus area and, um, the, the tenants, it's easier to rent if there are, you know, a couple parking spaces that people can use and share as opposed to having to get the parking pass for the street parking.
I think we were discussing before, I mean, to put it bluntly, I, I don't think there's any support for parking in the front based on just what's on the street there. And this would be a total one-off and I could see setting precedent for other properties along the way. I, I understand the concern of, you know, not having access to the back, but with the grade differences and the inability to screen with any type of landscaping, I can only speak for myself that what we, it is a non-starter for myself.
Yeah, I'd agree with that. I, I think the, um, I mean, it's not uncommon in that neighborhood and I used to live not far away that you don't have parking on the property. You park on the street. And that kind of comes with the territory. And I think it's important to maintain that to not negatively impact the fabric of the neighborhood. Isn't screening, uh, in the code?
For commercial projects zoning, it's in the zoning code, but it's not for residential.
It's still an important element, but it's not possible here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's hard to be like.
Yeah, the, the tricky part, because we were hoping to get parking along, you know, just kind of have a single curb cut and get parking up along the side of the house, but it's only seven feet wide. So that doesn't lend itself to even being able to open the doors within the fence and the wall, so.
Yeah, I, I would potentially entertain the two-spatter, uh, but I would love to see some really, really cool landscaping then that would blow it out of the park or have it.
Well, I mean, the issue is if you look up and down the street, I don't even see anyone who's got a curb cut. I mean, it's like, I think everything else is alley. So it's like, even that's gonna be, you know, unusual to have a, to have a car parked anywhere in the front. It doesn't occur anywhere else around here, so.
And it is a permanent area, right?
Yes. Yeah, she, the owner had tracked down one property, um, maybe a street, oh, in the general area, one that had a curb cut and parking along the side. Um, and again, it was a landlocked condition. So there's no access to the back because it's through another person's property and she's been unable to negotiate with that, uh, landowner.
So variance is an option, right?
So I'm not sure if we, yeah, I guess if we're doing this stair addition, we do have to get a variance. So a lot of times if you're just renovating, they just say it's an existing condition and, um, you know, kind of let it go, so. Okay, so would you be in, more in support of just the two spaces on the left that are more?
I would not be.
No?
Absolutely not.
I, I would be, but I'm only one door still. But it would have to be some really cool landscaping to, to make it look, you know, whether you're bringing up a port or making a porch or some sort of seating area or something that would, or lots of trees, something that would help kind of bring the whole space so that it looks like it's a part of it almost. Um, like I'm thinking like something like brick or what, you know?
Something that it almost doesn't feel like it's parking when there's no cars there.
Yes, exactly.
It feels like it's just a hangout spot.
Yeah, which I think could then have it be more like purposeful of the second tenant's wanting to use that space as outdoor space. But, um, that would be, that would be my suggestion on the parking aspect. Uh, but then we also talked a little bit about exterior as well. Should we move to that or do you want to talk a little bit more about the parking?
I mean, I think we, we kind of got like three hard no's for any parking in the front yard and then a partial. So I think, and I, I haven't been in front of this group before. Um, is it the five?
There's, there's typically seven.
Okay.
Two just couldn't, couldn't make it tonight, so.
Okay, okay.
Um, and the other two that couldn't make it, they're architects as well, so.
Ah, that says a lot.
Yeah, and I just want to explain a little bit of why I guess I would say no one to just, you know, the build, where it is and where those would be are kind of your primary entrance and so your driveway. If there was, that the primary entrance was on the other face and there was, you know, you, you could create that logical of here's the driveway where, where parked cars go and here's the entrance to your building. It just, the way that is with that, man, if you're walking around cars to get there, it just doesn't feel right aside from the fact that there's no other curb cuts in the area.
I mean, you're also like the heart of the student district where people are gonna be out on the sidewalk. I mean, it's just, it's an accident waiting to happen. It's not, I mean, it's not uncommon for houses in this neighborhood not to have off, off-street parking. I mean, it's just, you know, it's, it's a thing. I mean, I get that it's easier to rent with it, but.
Okay, so the side of the building?
Uh, yeah, I mean, maybe, would you like to explain, I guess, the, the thinking behind the, um, the sort of semi-enclosed stair?
So the owner wanted to pull the stair out so that, um, it would give the space back into the interiors for rentable area. Um, and so.
The owner also doesn't want to spend a lot of money.
Right. So the, the thinking was that I, a lot of times these commissions wouldn't go for an open stair. You know, those are, they're very discouraged. And so I thought kind of if we did a, a wall to conceal it, that that became the entrance. And it also gives us an ability to support a roof so that it's protected since it's gonna be the main entrance, an egress stair, um, it gets a little bit of weather protection. Um, so that, that was the thinking behind the wall and the roof and the stair location.
Why not enclose the other side? I mean, even with, you know, siding and open windows, I mean.
I think that's an option.
What I did like from that is, um, the ability to have, um, an open-air concept for like a little tiny patio almost for the second story.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I could see somebody maybe having like a couple chairs out there and enjoying that space if, if it could be something where you could kind of sit and enjoy it. I don't know how, why that platform is, but, um, the entrance with a no door to the, to the side is, I think, oh, it's a holdup for me. Um, and then I guess just trying to figure out material wise, like how that would tie together. Um, do you know if there's any interest in also painting the exterior of the, or are they gonna?
I know she's keeping the vinyl siding.
Yeah.
Um, so, and I think you can paint vinyl these days.
You could go with a similar color that isn't darker than the other ones and that way it doesn't curl, right? If it's a darker color, it will curl in the heat. So it has to be the same shade.
Oh, interesting.
So at least with my special sister's stuff.
So are all the windows being replaced or no?
No, the windows that work within the plan stay. Um, since we're reconfiguring the bedrooms, we have to get the egress windows. So most of the replacement windows are because of the egress. And we're adding the ones on the front to try to get that back to having windows.
And what, what is the use inside the, the front room?
Is the living room.
So, so it could accommodate larger windows?
It could, yes, yes. It's such a skinny building that, you know, I tried the one and the two and the one, I thought felt okay.
Better one's better. I, I think you could properly enlarge the one though.
Yeah, I'm just getting fed up on the size. I'm, I just, I think it'd be nicer if they were just a little bit bigger if possible.
Yeah, I think, I don't know.
I'm not sure what size I have those. I mean, it's probably, they're probably like 36 by 60, maybe 32 by 60.
But yeah, they can get a little bit bigger to kind of fill that space.
Kind of open it up, open up the impression a little more to, it seems very kind of paltry openings right now. Of course, better than none at all.
Um, and then that opening where it's just like the door into, um, Narnia almost, you know, have you thought about maybe like adding some sort of, um, what makes you want to go through the door? You know what I mean? Like at the moment, I don't know if I'd want to go through that.
Yeah, it'd be something to draw.
Yeah, can we make it?
Accentuate that.
Yeah, so when you have somebody who's delivering grub hub, they're not just going around to the open part, you know?
Oh, yeah.
They'll just, they'll know that that is.
Right.
The entrance, that is, um.
I think, I mean, you also be a little mindful of safety. I, I think the, the current design with the stair provides a, an unsecured area that someone could sort of conceal themselves, sort of negative intent. I, I think, I mean, I guess my, this is conceptual, right?
Yeah.
I mean, you're, you don't have an easy problem to solve because the, the existing building, what was the, the words you used, Felkus? Had some.
Cattywampus.
The, the more tactful one.
Oh.
Something about significant alterations.
Oh, it's seen some significant alterations over time.
The, you know, obviously the, the original building has been significantly altered and not in a very sympathetic way.
Yes.
And you're trying to, I think, um, both meet your owner's desire for more rentable area while kind of, you know, also not negatively impacting the, the building or the neighborhood, which isn't an easy task. Um, I, I would suggest with regard to the stair that either fully enclose the whole thing, um, which adds a lot of square footage, so I get it. Or I, I think in this case it's fine if it's open. It's, it's pushed back from the main facade. Like if you, you know, if you did it out of sort of wood and you, you, you gave it just a little bit of thickness to the posts and, you know, some trim up the top and bottom, so it didn't look like a cheap ass, you know, pressure-treated rental egress stair and gave it a nice roof, I, I think, as had been mentioned, it could be a positive amenity. And I, I think it can be just sort of honest.
I think you take a lot of iteration from looking at like a three-story apartment, a lot of those that have the breezeways, that it, it's not, you know, you get some railing that gets some opening, some material in there. I mean, it's fine to see in there. I mean, it, it can look nice, but it, and I think to Emma's point, like that door on the front may not become a door, but it's a wider opening into that stairwell. So hey, you're moving stuff in and then it doesn't just look like a punch door opening. It looks like a entrance that's kind of framed and you're going in there and it's more centered on that opening. I just think that there, if, if you look at a lot of apartment buildings, you know, kind of suburban, three-story one, everyone does different from, some have window openings, some are railing. There, there's a lot more that can be done with that. And it could turn around at the side rather than just be an open facade on, on the side.
And then is this, uh, if, if I'm looking at this picture, is this just like a drop-off right here after the landing on the bottom?
Yeah.
Stairs? So that, you know, if, if you were to think about somebody who is walking towards the house, they're always gonna take the easiest path to get there, whether they're cutting through stuff. So they'll probably just start jumping that like little ledge right there, depending on how high it is, you know what I mean? So they might miss that door all, all completely. So it's some, something that kind of draws your eye to the front.
And I, I, I mean, just think that even finish that off, make that one great. You can do that for covered bike storage. I mean, there's just so many more things that that can be used under there for bike racks and rather than just this one little stoop and it drops off again and.
Hey, I mean, the other suggestion I would have is the, the massing of the building is a little tortured as it is. But I, I think the, the thing you want to do is figure out how to add on the square footage without making it even more so. You know, and I think you're clearly trying to do that with the dormers on the front where you preserve the, the kind of initial profile of the building. But I, I think like, uh, the, the other side of it. Yeah, I mean, like you got a lot of stuff going on. Like I think, I guess I, I would advise just get some thought to, to how you can add to the building without, you know, without maybe muddling the, the massing more than it is. As a relatively minor note, I, I would note the, the existing building had more windows on this elevation. I don't think the, the big blank three-story facade does you any favors.
Yeah, so this facade is only one foot nine inches from the property. Yeah, so this facade is only one foot nine inches from the property line, so by code, we're not allowed to have any windows.
Yeah, that's fair.
That's why I had to push that middle wall back in order to get it three feet away, so I can pop an egress window in there for that little bedroom. So sometimes, depending on the extent of renovation, they've made us take all the windows out and do a fire-rated wall. So it might be in the end, a solid wall.
So with that being said, it would be really nice then to make sure that the, that there is light coming in on the other parts of the, of the house, if possible, I think. If you can't have a window on the, on the other side, it'd be really nice to
Right.
bring in that natural light.
So are you guys relatively in support of the third floor addition, or?
I don't mind the third floor. I think that's okay, so you can.
I prefer it without, but I, I don't, I, I think you, I'd be willing to allow it. I, I think, like I said, I think the whole thing just needs a little bit of cleanup. There's, I think there's just, the, the massing's a bit all over the place. Like, I'm not sure what the, the purpose of the, the roof next to the stair is, like.
So that's all existing. So basically, I'm just taking that one rectangle.
Well, I mean, I mean, the issue is, you're gonna, you're gonna drain the air, and you're gonna have a bit of a mess there, right?
Oh, you're talking about with our new roof coming in?
So I mean, you.
Not the door or roof, but.
Maybe you're better off leaving this, simplifying this, and, you know, there's a lot of stuff going on here. I, I think just look at the massing, figure out a way to sort of, if you can, get what the owner wants, but, um, you know, not creating more, more protrusions than are already there. I, I mean, I'm not gonna give you more specific advice than that, but I think you, you, do you, you get what I'm saying?
I think it's easier said than done.
Yeah, I mean, well, I mean.
Just because we're trying to keep as much intact as possible and just get some space on that second floor. But I understand the stair roof is kind of wreaking havoc on adding to, it's adding chaos to what's already chaos.
Yes.
So, back to the stair, would you guys be in support of just eliminating the roof and the stair, and just having a nice staircase?
I would do a roof, but I'd probably do maybe just a, a flat roof, kind of like what Ryan was saying. If you look at sort of three-story walk-ups, nice block roof, nice columns and a, a guardrail, and as Emma said, it would be a positive feature for the house.
Okay.
I, I think it can get simpler, but I, I think, you know, just, you know, don't do a, a cheap-ass metal fire stair, like, put a little thought into it, and, um.
Yeah, that's gonna be tough.
So, on the other side, um, do you mind looking at the heart where it backs up to the property line? It looks like there's like just a little window kind of peeking out. Is that, um, is the reason why you kept that second roof on, or like you added that additional roof because that's where the third bedroom goes, is that correct? So that's just what is it, so how many bed, how many windows are for that top?
So there's three bedrooms in the new third floor. So there's a, there was one at the front, one at the back, and one in the middle, and so the one in the middle, that's its egress window.
Yeah, go back to the, the 3D if you don't mind.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You can see, next one over. So the, the original roof of the building is basically here?
That's not even the original. Actually, the original was too short, so we, I lifted it.
So do we have to have that? Is that, or are we adding that for aesthetic? Is that, or are we keeping it? Is that, um, that like little slip right there that comes out, is that something that was added, or?
So I mean, the, the hard third floor is added.
This, like, do you?
That's all added. Okay. It's all, it's all new. Basically, we're ripping the entire roof off, we're building up new walls, and we're installing a new roof.
Why do you have to have that break?
Be, I have to push the wall back in order to get the, the wall reading from the property line, so I can have that window.
Yeah.
But I don't want to give up, you know, that two, that one foot, six foot of space in the other bedrooms.
Yeah.
So I kept that out.
Can you, uh, can you put, uh, can, can you put more window into that little space?
Yes, I could add more windows besides the one.
It looks, yeah, it looks kind of stingy there, if you, and if you have that.
Yeah, and I don't know, I don't know that anyone is ever gonna see this. It's hard to even kind of get a photo of this side, because it's so tight to the other house. The other side is way more open.
But this is gonna be taller than the other house, right? I mean, you're adding a whole new floor to this.
Right, so that's why if you look at the sections on the last page, you can see it has the original, and then it has the proposed where it's at the front gable, and then it has the proposed at the dormer, and then it has the proposed where the dormer stepped in.
Sorry, I don't think I got to that last page before you came in, so.
Do we have, do we have a photo of the, of, of what the house is?
Right now?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, next to this house?
Okay, I see what you mean, like, there's a ton of side yard on.
On the east side, yeah.
Trees.
And so that's where the stairs are gonna be suggested, and then on the other side.
That's very tight, yeah.
I wouldn't be opposed to seeing what it would look like going, um, like, I understand what you mean about like trying not to, to lose space for those other bedrooms. I think I just have a really hard time looking aesthetically, seeing that like indent in, in part of it. Um, so I feel like if you could figure out some way to kind of tie it together so it looks like it's on purpose, uh, I think that could, like, whether you're adding more windows, um, or.
They're looking toward the square.
Let me, I, max height is thirty-five feet, and they're proposing twenty-seven point eight. And they are like, from my understanding, you're in communication with Building and Zoning Services, so they can review your plans and tell you what variances you would need.
Looks like they need an increase in FAR.
Uh-huh, yeah, yeah, so, um, they're proposing point seven two FAR, and the max is point six. Um, so, so it's a little bit denser than what's recommended as well.
It's also taller.
Yeah, 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 it's taller.
I don't know, I mean, it's just a bit of a muddled mess right now. I, I'm not insipidic, because I, I think you've got a tough problem to start with. I mean, you've got an owner with some ambitious goals. And I honestly am a little bit on the fence about whether I'd support the increase in FAR, because it, I think it becomes a really tall house on the site, and, um, and I'm not sure, yeah, if you go to the street view. Because you're, you know, basically, as you said, you're gonna, you're gonna lift all of this up, and it's gonna come up that much more to get the third floor on.
I think the issue is it's just so narrow, the way the house will.
Yeah, we're lifting it up a little over three feet.
Three feet total?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, that's not, I mean.
Yeah, we're lifting the ridge up three feet.
Okay, I mean, that's not too bad.
But again, that's, that's what, that's why we're then flaring.
Right, to sort of mimic the, the shed dormer.
I, I, I would approve a, a third floor if you, if, I just need to be more aesthetically pleasing. I think design is what I'm having a really hard time wrapping my head around, uh, of wanting to approve something like that, um, so, here's my feedback on that part.
Yeah, I think it's a, give and take. I have no problem with the additional height of the third story, but you have to get on making some things better, and, um, that, that's the stair that's looking at that side elevation, that's, you know, the landscaping in the front and not doing the parking. And so I, I think that's what the owner has to make the decision on, is, um, you know, for the density, they're willing to do the other things.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that seems pretty fair to me, and, and then what Ellen and Ryan said seems pretty reasonable. Agreed.
Do you feel clear with feedback and next steps?
I do, yeah.
Wonderful. Okay. Do you all have anything else to say that hasn't been said already?
Yeah, done.
Okay.
I think you.
Glad I made it in time.
Yes, I am too.
No, it's all good. Yeah, it's, it's so rare to go faster than the agenda.
Yeah, it's, yeah, I always, for, for our commission, we're pretty efficient, so I always recommend at least an hour before your, your approximate time.
Well, next time. Sweet, we can't wait to see you again.
Bye.
Thank you very much, Brenda. Okay, well, that was our last item, so, um, do you wanna call it?
We'll adjourn.
Yeah?
I'll second that.
Okay, all right, we're, we're adjourned. We don't have to vote on it.
Don't have to vote on it?
No. All right, thank you all.